Right. Call this special meeting of the Southwest Licking Board of Education to order. It is Monday, August the 10th at 5:33 PM. We'll read the meeting notice. Notice is hereby given that this special meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education, Licking County, Ohio, on Monday, August the 10th, 2020, 5:30 PM, in the SWL Board Meeting Room, 927B South Street, Patasko, Ohio, for the purpose of abatements, high school graduation requirements, and athletic locker room building bleacher project. We recognize all of our visitors, both here and online. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag for Mrs. Dart friends and Mrs. Borden's friends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Zani.
Here.
Ms. Tingle.
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. We need an adoption of the agenda, please.
We have approval of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle.
Yes. Motion passes? All right, business items, we have item number 2A, the athletic locker room and bleacher project.
The first thing for this one is we've asked Brian to kind of give you an update where it's at.
Yeah.
So I'll turn over to Brian first, if you could go ahead and start, Brian?
Yeah, no problem, thanks for having me. It's, I know it's been a while since I've been in front of you all, but we've been working pretty much all summer on getting the facility where it needs to be for bidding purposes. You can see on your screen, this is the completed floor plan of the first floor and we will recall on the mechanical platform. When I say mechanical platform, that's different than mezzanine for code purposes. We had a, I was able to have a conversation with the plans examiner prior to going, prior to submitting this floor plan approval, because I wanted to get their feedback on this mechanical space slash attic that we're now calling mechanical platform. By calling it a platform, it puts us into some different code, a little bit less stringent code requirements. And by signage, we're able to accomplish some of that. So it's, it can no longer be considered a public space, which it was more than the first place. It's more just an area for mechanical equipment. And then we have the technology closet up there. We'll have to decide to do that after the building's complete is up to you. But for the intent of this project, it's a mechanical platform. So on the first floor, you can see that there really hasn't, nothing's changed since we last updated you all on the design. Really what's happened from the last update until now is we just updated all the documents. We cut sections, we did the roof plan, we did all the details. So that's contractors who are forbidding. So there really isn't much of an update as far as the design. Just to refresh, starting from left to right, we have over here, we got larger facility above that, so the coaches' room, or I'm sorry, the officials' room, where they'll go for games. There's a shower and a toilet room in there as well. Next to that is going to be what we're calling the female locker room. It has showers and a full restroom facility and a coaches' office. And then leading from the girls' locker room and in between the boys' locker room, which is over here, is the trainers' room. So there will be direct access from the girls' locker room as well as the boys' locker room right into the training, training room here. Just above the training rooms, that mechanical space. We'll have a washer dryer, hot water meters. This is where you'll have the first access point for the mechanical platform above. We'll just come up the steps here and consider your platform. Next to that is the, what we're calling the male locker room. This is your football locker room. Again, full shower facilities and toilet facilities, as well as technology and market boards within the locker room to allow the coaches to coach them at halftime before the game actually. And then we have a nice sized office here for the coaches. And then you see we do have a door that is leading into this other locker room. That's going to be overflowed during the week, or if they want to use this coaches' office for some other purposes throughout the week. On game night, this was, this is where the visiting teams, all visiting team coaches would go. As well with the visiting team here in this locker room here. And again, full facilities, shower and toilet. But we also, if you recall, we put a equipment door in the middle here. So this could go down, it could be locked. And then you could have a men's and a women's locker room going on at the same time, or you know, both women's and both men's. This section is going to be open to locker rooms. But just note that the shower facilities will only be on the upper locker. They will not have access to showers in the lower locker. All right, moving on, it's at the other end here is going to be what we will consider the visitors' toilet facility. And then a mechanical space, a storage space above it. So that's kind of the floor plan there. You can stop at any time if you have any questions. This is the mechanical space here. You can see the stair that I showed you down below. Once you come up, you'll come into the tech space and I'll rack with some of the equipment. And then from there, you'll see a lot of this kind of grayed out boxes. And this is a lot of the mechanical equipment that's going to be up there. We placed it in such a way that you can use it for, you know, some other mechanical equipment or whatever you decide to do after the building is done. But again, it will be no public access to this space. The one comment that we did get in the conversation that I had with the plans examiner is having two means of access out of the space through the mechanical platform. Right now, we just got this one stair. So because of the travel distances of 75 feet being the max of the travel distance, we were unable to get to this portion of the building upstairs. You can see we have a wall up in here. Then there was also going to have to be a wall somewhat over in this area because of our travel distances. So when I was talking with her today, we came up with the potential of putting a, or a tread stair in the top part of this visitors', coaches' office. Okay, if we were to put that right here, that would give us access to this space upstairs, roughly about right through here. Okay, which now we do have access, which will give us full rain and coverage for exits and ways to get up to the platform. Now, the ordinary tread stair rule is permitted if we do a mechanical platform, which again, it needs no public access. So that has not been finalized yet. I just found that out today in our conversation. I did talk to Bob about it briefly today, but it's something that we'll want to have a, another meeting on later this week, just to see what the thoughts are on putting it in that location. Next page here, you can just see this is just whether the largeness, stair largeness, a lot of your details that you might not be too interested in. Then we get into the elevations. This is, it'll be the elevation of the field. We're going to have some verbiage here, we're going to have a nice logo here. We don't have it in 3D yet, but we'll have something for you that we could put up at some football games this year, if you wish to do that. So we can give you the 3D rendered of this building. You can see the, all the different doors that are being, are located in the front. Again, this is the main football locker room. And then the trainers' room, then we have some verbiage here, front, again, a logo, which will be led from below, living in the gaming area. Besides, or again, you can see them, sorry about that, trying to get to... Besides, you can see that we have the higher roof here, the lower drop down roof here. This is mentioned, we have some of the other doors that we placed here just to give a little bit of character, bring it up a little bit. I'm not trying to get too much extent into it. As, as of always, we have an eight by eight scored concrete base material, but then brick above it. You can see that that's what that would look like. And then this area up here would be the EFS material. And those colors that we're going to select will be forthcoming. And then the back of the facility, this is what you'll see when you're at the baseball field. Again, this is going to be your main access points for all the players off the back of the facility, which will be nice because in the front of the facility, you're going to have people coming from the bleachers, to go to the concession stands, to the restroom, and you don't want that interaction with the players and the fans. So by having the players go around the backside of the building is really going to secure those, those players and the fans from getting into arguments or in the building sections. Again, some of the contractors, but this is kind of a section cut through the building in five different locations. Some of your ball sections, I'm not sure how much, but just you'll see. So you can stop if you want.
I think that's good, Brian. I just wanted to get a good overview of what's going on and looking forward to going from there, so.
All right, cool.
I think that's good.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess just to, just to kind of sum it up, we're ready to, after this meeting, we're ready to put kind of a low on it. And then the TRC meeting is actually the one that has been scheduled now, so it's pushed to October 1st. So once the TRC meeting is, is done, we'll get any comments from them. We'll get the comments, any additional comments from Lincoln County Building Department. We'll put that on addendums for the contractors so that they can understand it and they can put a bid on to many of the changes. So right now, we're looking at towards the second week of October for the bids to come in. And then I understand it's October 15th, we're meeting that week. Hopefully get it all, I just haven't approved at that 15th, 16th meeting. And then start this one here.
Are the bleachers still a part of this whole thing? Is that a separate drawing or?
Yeah, it's going to be a separate, we, we have site drawings here. It's, it's on a different package that we're going to be doing all of the grading and associated work with the, the, the earth, if you will, to accommodate it for the bleachers. But the bleachers are going to be coming afterwards. Is the install on that, we need to figure out the best timing for that. We would probably want to bid that out here this winter and get everything ready and prepared, get the shop drawings done so that once the weather breaks, they have all, everything there and then they can get it constructed.
So our goal then is to have all this done by August 2021, right?
Correct. Yep.
The bleachers is kind of like a self designed, builders design. So whoever gets to bid or actually designed the bleachers, that kind of works, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, we're working with one and then we're going to, we'll bring that out to a couple of different, to a couple of different bleacher manufacturers and they can, we can start putting, getting pricing put together for it.
And it is bleachers with a press box?
Yes, this will be, have a press box that'll be integrated within the bleacher itself. And we're reviewing some of those options now. We're working with a representative from Dan Clayton, who's been really good to work with. And he's got several different examples in the Columbus area that he's been able to, to showcase. And so it's been a great help in that respect. And then it, now it just comes down to what type of press box? Do you want one with a viewing slash filming deck above? Or do we want to do it on the sides only? Those types of questions that are coming up. And we're working through those as we speak, so.
Jake's been working with quite a bit too, do you want to say another Jake?
Yeah, yeah, I had with Paul Redd, who's from Dan Clayton. And we worked with them around, we did our state renovation, they did ours. That's been eight years, eight or nine years ago. But they just did Lake Woods a few years ago, which obviously ours is a bit bigger, but it's the same kind of idea, a little bit different press box. They're working on Grahamville's right now. So I'm going to try and get out there. It's kind of in the hard hat phase, so they're trying to get that ready for this year. So I'm going to try and make it out to Grahamville also. But then we'll get obviously bids based on the design and size that Dan Clayton gave us a bid on, we'll get other bids as well to make sure we're, you know, price wise, that we're in a good place. But they, I mean, they do a lot, they did all the old TNG schools. And, you know, so we've already kind of gotten down the path a little bit as far as kind of how we want some of the things that look, you know, give us an idea, can I work up a good quote? It'll, it'll be good.
Looking about 2,000 seats, correct?
Yeah, we were looking at about 2,000 seats. On that, that home, obviously flipping to the home side. Now it's now the visitor side, we could become the home side. And that'll give us a nice big visitor side too. Obviously, putting a new press box in is definitely a part of that.
Will we keep the press box on the other side or will we have that taken down?
Probably, I mean, I haven't come to that yet, but probably take it down.
Is there a certain number of seats that we have to have to start putting, like really big tournaments and things like that?
Not necessarily, having a bigger visitor side will help.
Okay.
Because now when you're turning, not flipping it, turning that old home side into a visitor side, it helps because a lot of times that was, you know, if you want to host like playoff games, having a big visitor side helps because so many schools have such a small visitor side.
Okay.
So that right, right there, that's something we want to, we want to look at. They sent some drawing over the other day to show where, how far back the home, you know, bleachers will go. If there was some concern about, you know, the baseball field right there, the drainage and everything, but I think we're in good shape.
And how about when they, I mean, like the track and all of that, are, are we going to tear things up when things need to go in?
No, they track, everything's going to be touched whatsoever. The fence is going to be on the other side of the fence.
Okay.
I agree, Brian, we don't, we shouldn't be digging into track whatsoever.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any disruption of the track at all. So that's why we thought starting the bleachers in the spring would be okay because, you know, you're, you're starting, your, your starters' area, finish lines all over on the other side. And then obviously, that's going to be something that you can decide, I guess, moving forward, is do you want to continue to have the visitor, what would, what be, what would be considered the visitor's side? Do you want that to still be the starter and the, and the finish line? Otherwise, you would have to essentially flip it over to the other side if you want the, what's going to be the new home bleachers to be the finish line. You would have to, you know, repaint and you'd essentially have to re redo your entire track. Now, you can do that at any time. You know, you can wait until your track needs to get repainted, then you can do it. Because your bleachers, I, I assume you don't have 2,000 people showing up for track and field events, but maybe. But you have that huge bleacher over there on that side where you can continue to use it. Just for...
If you want to refinish it, then...
Then you would do it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just figuring out how it is and even the starting line will, will become the visitor side. Now I don't think that'll be a big problem for track.
I mean...
We just had it resurfaced.
It always...
It's pretty expensive to resurface.
Always like flip it around the next time we do.
Right, the next time whenever you resurface, yeah.
But when you said that during the construction piece, when you wouldn't have to worry about the start finish because it would be on the other side, I'm just going to double check that we also wouldn't have to worry about the other side because that's where pole vault, long jump, and high jump is. They're on that, the, the future home side as well.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I had a conversation with Jake and a couple others that if there's a home track meet that we just, we give the contractor the schedule and we let them know that these particular days here, you have to be done at 3 o'clock. So, and they'll, they'll gladly get their equipment shut down and stuff like that. Because you're right, you don't want equipment starting up or, you know, and all this back, the backup beepers going on while people are trying to listen to a gun go off for the start, you know what I'm saying? So we'll, we'll make, make sure that we get that addressed.
We get everybody folks start, home team to win.
That's right.
Brian, I, you were talking about the network stuff. Are, is there plans to tie that field house and the new press box into the building G-Pon fiber? Or has that not even really kind of been thought about yet?
Right now, what, all we've discussed is that we're going to have conduits running from the, the locker room building over to the vicinity of the, where the bleachers are going to be. And then we can pick up, you know, electric and, and whatever else that we need once we make those decisions. We are going to bring the, the speaker system, the PA system and all of that over to this new press box. So we are going to have to, you know, figure out how that's all going to work. And then at that point, you know, I guess if you have any input, you'll want to get with Jake and, and find out from him what it is that we want to have in this press box. Because typically, we just have, like you said, we have PA and we have, you know, the, the sound system. But anything that has to do with your coaches and the headphones, if there's something that you would want to do there, we can certainly look into it. Most of them go wireless, but...
Exactly, well, that's just the point. We actually, we, for example, we provide a data drop as well as wireless internet access in the press box for, you know, the press that are there. In fact, instances where we've had like Ohio doing, you know, streaming the game and they've been able to plug into that press box too. So I'm hoping that maybe I can work with John to find a way to extend the G-Pon network from say to the four or five, or the high school, the middle school, whatever, kind of makes the most sense out into that field house. So we can feed that to the field house and the press box.
We've talked about that a little bit anyway, but already because the fire alarm is going to be hooked up to existing high school. So there's going to be a conduit already running from the existing high school to this press, to this new athletic locker room, so.
It's only through the fiber.
Yeah, so there's fiber between the two or however, like if they can split off, if it's coming from four, five, from high school, we can work around. There'll be, we'll have fiber out there, fiber ring would be out there.
That'll be how it gets, how the phones work, that'll be out.
Yeah, oh, it's like the fire alarms on, so it'll be hooked up.
Now, I'm glad you brought that up. And I guess if there's anything that you want requested, make sure you get with Jake on that. Or you'll have to somehow get in touch with us. But we're kind of going through Jake right now as the, kind of the, that, that point of contact for that. And then on that note too, because we're, we're hooking it into the existing, what's going to be the new middle school, you are going to go a year without fire alarm and technology in the locker room building. Just so that everybody understands that. The fire alarm is not a big deal because it's not required by code. But unfortunately, you're going to go a year without, if something does happen in there that you're not going to know. But then also, any telephones that are in there, security cameras and stuff like that will not be hooked up until, I'm not going to say a full year. I don't know when the work is going to be done on the renovation project that would then allow for all that stuff to plug in. So I guess the, the answer, the, the answer to, if, if I was asked, is it'll be hooked up once the high school is hooked up. So it might be a year, it might be a year and four months, it could be 11 months, I'm not sure.
Well, this helps, Brian. I have an existing aerial fiber run from the bus garage behind the middle school to the current press box. Maybe we can somehow utilize that to feed data and get the cameras out of that facility until we can actually finish renovation.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to...
John, I'll get the JGS, doesn't need to have...
Yeah, talk to John, talk to John about that, they look and check it off for us.
Yeah, you need to get on the, need to get on flying with John.
Security would be problematic in the locker room to me, very much so.
I don't want to lose security cameras after, I don't want to lose phones with the coaches. So we have to come up with something. If I'm shooting wireless across the air and beat that building, we'll figure something out.
I think the security is very disconcerting to me in that. Maybe add a camera to the soccer stadium too while you're out.
So, yeah, Jeff, you'll want to get with John Ritter and... Yeah, we, we need to get this ironed out.
For sure.
And actually, I may have, his name's Jacob Rankin. He's, he's our tech coordinator in our Columbus office. I may actually have him just buzz over there and you guys could, if he feels comfortable enough. And then maybe you guys can work that, work that out.
I'm okay with that too, yeah. All right, I'll reach out to, to John and, and if you have my emails, you can put me in touch with them too, we can, we can sort something out.
Perfect.
Thanks very much.
Yep.
There is an option for a separate stand, one of the fire systems is going to be more expensive. Did we talk about doing that as an alternate, John, Brian, I can't remember. Did we talk about it, I can't remember.
No, we, we, we didn't talk about it as an alternate. We, we discussed as, as doing it as the base bid and just having a standalone fire system. But then it wasn't, it wasn't, it was decided that we wanted to connect it to, to the high school building.
Middle school should stay as we run past the other buildings, we can run, so we can tie those.
Yeah, you know, at this point, you know, anything can be done. But, you know, we, we're trying to stay within our budget. So I'm not saying one thing's more important than the other. It's just unfortunately that, you know, you've got a huge renovation going on next door to it. And it just makes absolute sense to tie the two together because it's, the system's there, so.
Oh, and I agree, it does make sense to tie the middle school permanently because we are getting the end, getting rid of it. As a, as a stock gap, while current high school's being renovated, maybe we can make that work, so I'll, I'll see if I can put it together next time.
Any questions? Brian, I think you have, you're going to take much more of your time. I appreciate it to give me, give us an update where everything's at. And I'll be in touch with the board signs move forward.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Yep, see ya.
You've got to hang up now, Brian, too, because you have your control in it.
Oh, yeah, so what do I got to do, just hit stop, share?
Yeah, stop, share, just hit leave at the bottom or end.
Yeah, end, all right, see y'all.
Bye. You ready? You ready for a motion?
It's up to the board to move forward, yeah. We want to know if the board wants to move forward.
Yep, so we need a motion to proceed with the bidding and construction of the athletic locker room and bleacher project. So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
My notes just mentioned this, money to pay for this is coming out of a COPS debt issuance we did that's being repaid with our permanent improvement levy. So this is not coming out of general funds, not affecting the general operation of the school district. It's coming out of permanent improvement levy, so that's where the money is coming from.
And that money is already been set aside.
Yes, we have $4 million waiting for it.
All right, Mr. Jones, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle.
Yes, that motion passes, if you'll let Brian know. All right, item 2A, actually, if you want to...
Do you need to have your meeting?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Need an abatement for Meyer St. Graceing. Can we do 2A, 2B, and C together? Yeah.
Yeah, you can, do one.
Sure.
Do a motion, we can talk about it.
Motion for 2A, B, and C. Second. Okay?
So both these abatements are basically two recumenes, whatever things exactly say. And our views to the school district, they're getting... And our views to the school district, they're getting thirty percent of the gross income tax from the Jets, are getting one less cent for at least one square foot payment each year, the abatement. And additionally, there's a subsequent payment, and if the income tax hasn't come in to at least equal to two, two cents per square foot, the company make additional payment to get us up to two cents per square foot, ten thousand dollars towards our legal fees. So, it's basically the same thing, it's the same project we approved for Core Five, for their basic lower. South Gate, and now this is in Mink both, actually, I think in Mink is actually the same. If you remember T P A, we approved one building prior for them in Mink. This one, that one kind of fell under the old Prologis one there, so it was the twenty percent of the income tax, two point two one five. Now, this one, though, is back to what we want. The first building was actually bought by Prolo, by Amazon, or Amazon's renting out one of the two, but Amazon building, people are going in there for, probably last mile delivery. There's not gonna be a ton of jobs, I don't think, maybe a hundred, but it's gonna be a delivery hub for them. Uh, their current T P A building on Bing Street, this one's gonna be right beside it, their second building. This is gonna be, I think, equal size or very close to it, so... But for a school district, both projects in Meyer Shank, it's all, it's the same dollar amount, obviously Meyer Shank's a little smaller, but they're over the million dollars per year, that's in the M O U for the Taskful Park. So, really, the Meyer Shank, you don't really have a lot to say, because they found they basically, all the terms in the M O U were met.
Right.
So, the board, based on that M O U, said we would automatically grant the abatement if those terms were met, they had been met, including ten thousand dollars for legal fees. That's the two abatements, any questions on either one of them? Basically, T P A's been good, has done a good job for us, and Meyer Shank's been here before. They're just going to a bigger facility in the Task, you know, Corporate Park, it's only gonna be the second project within the Corporate Park, then A E P, and this now is gonna be on the other end for that. So, hopefully, that can maybe give a little bit of a lifeline Corporate Park, but I think it's gonna really happen until they get sewer in there, they have sewer, so...
I thought they were pretty close to getting that done, weren't they?
I think they'd still, they haven't agreed to it yet, but I know Meyer Shank has had to put his own septic system in.
Okay. Wow.
So, and I think it'll be required to join the sewer once they put in, so they pay for it twice, which will probably be a good thing, but... So, yeah, that's one, probably the biggest thing in that Corporate Park, because there's water down through it, but there is not sewer.
I've, I've...
But they were, I know they were talking about...
I know they were there, if they, if they didn't approve at the last meeting, I know that they're really close.
And maybe they're closer than I'm aware of, I haven't heard lately, but...
I actually thought they did last meeting, but I may have mistaken.
Yeah, you can't get a big business without sewer in there.
No, I think two biggest things is, actually, Google was wanting to go there, but water volume and the sewer, both are a big issue in that Corporate Park, but if they can solve that, I think that probably filled up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions at all about either one of these two?
Look, we did a deal again.
I know, I was thinking the same thing.
You're saying we did the same thing, right?
Good job, Mr. Jones and the group, everybody involved in that.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, those pass. And last thing, high school graduation requirements.
So, this is a two-part discussion. The first part's always the informing, and then the second part's the discussion piece. So, just kind of a F Y I, one thing that we talked about, we brought it to you last spring, we changed our current policy to reflect the alignment of the twenty graduation credits, removing the fine arts, we still have the arts. We previously were twenty-one. We're gonna continue forward with that this year, just given the current circumstances and trying to figure out scheduling for kids. So, that's just kind of a, wanted to fill you in on that. And then, I kind of wanted to talk about with, along with the requirements, high school and just in general in the district. I wanted to put something out there for maybe us to talk about, for you to think about. And I I gave you a little bit of information in the board report. So, basically, when we presented the plan, when I presented the plan to the board for how we would reopen schools, I did the alignment, like many counties did, of the color system for the risk levels, which I I believe the board meeting, obviously, was a Thursday, and prior to that, there wasn't another Licking County school that had come out with their plan at that time. I felt like that was our board meeting, that was our time to do it, and so we went ahead with that schedule or plan. So, on that Friday, the day after the board meeting, the health department came out with something to the county, recommending we do not align with the colors, you know, which is different than many of the other county health departments, you know, or other county districts were doing. But our county said you wouldn't recommend that for multiple reasons. So, what I wanted to talk about tonight or to discuss is, we're coming right around here. Thursday is the decision for the announcement of schools. You know, we've committed to this date, because families need to make arrangements and know what they're doing, and as well as teachers need to get ready, we'll be ready either way, but they need to start preparing. So, one thing I don't know if it's worth discussing, or how everybody feels, is if we revisited that remote learning at the risk level of RET. And and what that means is, in in talking to the the health department and the superintendents, the ones that are following the same as us, either all-in or remote learning, if you don't follow the color system, the health department works with you on two different metrics, which is how they determine if you should close down school. So, those would be, number, uh, number one, how many cases do you have in your actual school district of ten thousand? Number two, well, and that also would include households. So, they look at the number of ten thousand, and then they look at the households, because you could have a household that has quite a few, whereas, you know, how many households do you have in in that ten thousand range of cases? Another thing they do is they look at absentee data from the school district. So, that's something that we're required this year to work at the health department, we'll be submitting down daily, is all of our data from each of our buildings. And then, based on those two variables, within just our school district, they would make the decision, working with us on a weekly basis, whether they felt there would be a recommendation from them in collaboration with us to close down the school, because of the levels of either the absenteeism and or combination with how many cases per ten, per ten thousand. So, as it stands, and we don't know today, but if we don't change on Thursday, we'll be all remote. If we follow the plan that we presented and shared with the community. So, I didn't know if it would be worth a conversation as a board to talk about how you feel, if we altered that piece and realigned ourselves with the rest of the county, or we can continue to stay the course. I felt like it was the least worth having a conversation, engaging everybody's opinions. So, just putting out there.
With the second data point of being our attendance, can that be somewhat skewed, since twenty-five percent of our kids are going to be online?
It wouldn't be those kids, it would be, it would be the percent of kids that have selected in-person that are supposed to come in person. So, they wouldn't be looking at, you know, the remote learners, that would be removed. And right, right now, currently, they don't have a hard-pressed concrete number today, they're talking around twenty percent, which is typically what they say when you start to get into flu season, when you look at shutting down buildings. So, that number wouldn't surprise me if that's where they landed. They had a conference call, a couple of those schools with the health department this morning. I didn't participate, I wasn't invited to participate, because we were kind of doing something different, so it wasn't applicable. But as I'm having more and more conversations, you know, I just felt like we should at least, we should at least talk about it as a group.
Have any other Licking County districts done what you're talking about right now?
Yeah, that's what, um, the, all of the districts that have decided to go remote and or all-in person are doing what I'm talking about. We're the, actually, we're one in the county aligned to the color chart.
Okay.
And and not that I think that's a bad thing, because at the time the decision was made, that is what a lot, and that is still what a lot of area schools are doing. So, I don't think it's necessarily a bad plan. I don't know if there's a better plan or not, but I think at least now knowing this additional piece to the puzzle, or at least another option, I felt like we should at least talk about it and engage what people are thinking and how people feel. Because, just to throw another little piece to the puzzle, it's been asked to me by a variety of people, you know, well, if we're, and if we're all remote, will we have sports? Well, the answer is yes, and the reason being is because a lot of these other schools will not be remote, because they're not at the level yet where the county would say it's time to shut your school down. So, we're not going to deny our our kids an opportunity to compete, whether that be in a sport or the band or whatever, when everyone else is doing that, except for, I do believe, I'm not sure if they finalized the decision, but I know Newark was on the fence of allowing athletics, they've committed to a hundred percent remote learning at this time. That's the only district so far in the county that has done that. So, I don't know if they've finalized that decision, we have our next meeting on Thursday with the superintendents. So, I'm not saying we have to change today, could, I'm just saying I think we should discuss it and see what every, each of you individually is thinking about that.
So, the alternative is to rely on reports?
You'd be relying on two metrics for what they base the color system on, the risk levels.
Right, but, so, if we have, how would we know we have ten COVID cases?
They have, the health department has all of the data for the whole, I mean, our Licking County Health Department has all the county, they have it broken down by school district, so he could provide us on a weekly basis a report that will show our exact numbers in Southwest Licking.
And where do they get those from?
I'm assuming all the cases that are reported, they know where the people live, have their addresses and...
Because I know right now, it's it's the responsibility of a parent, if their child is sick, don't they have to get testing or...
Correct, he's only gonna have confirmed COVID cases. And the medical professionals have to contact the health department by law to inform them of of the cases. So, when he is telling you the, how many we have each week, that's coming from documented actual cases, not based on children who are sick, because kids could have the regular flu, you know, or something else as well.
I, my personal opinion is that we probably should look at what is actually going on in our specific area. So, yes, that we should proba, that we went with what we had when it was presented to us, because that's what we had, but now, hearing what we have from the health department, which is new information, that we should probably maybe take a step back and look at that particular information, because they are looking at Southwest Licking schools. And the, if we're looking at just our kids, there's, there's no reason to keep our kids out of school if we're doing, if we're looking at indicators that show kids from Newark are sick. Why would we keep Southwest Licking kids out of school if it's Granville that's sick kids? So, why wouldn't you wanna look at the indicators only for Southwest Licking? But that's... And I certainly think if we're letting our kids play sports, we should be, there's no reason for our kids to not be in school, but that's just my personal opinion.
I will say one thing with Cher, let me pull up a spreadsheet here. We are seeing, I mean, rapidly changing numbers daily as far as parent choice. And when I spoke with the news, and I read the recent article, the average class size for the elementary, it's it's too hard to pinpoint the high school and the middle school, was twenty-one. And as of this morning, so without whatever's coming after that, you're looking at twenty, twenty, nineteen, and eighteen for our youngest, our four lowest grade levels. So, the numbers are getting smaller and smaller, and more and more families choosing remote. So, I know one of the concerns with the in-person component was the size of the classes, and I know they are, they're getting smaller, because people are continuing to change to another learning option.
And the kind of, this week, I called Casey and I asked for tours of buildings, because I wanted to see what socially-distanced classrooms looked like. And for the most part, I was somewhat impressed with how they were able to arrange desks so that people could move around. Now, granted, I just was at the Task lab, and I was, I can't talk, I also was at the high school. And, I don't, I've, personally, I felt it was a good thing to do, because with all the people contacting us, I could see with my own two eyes what we were talking about. And if the numbers get lower, that's even better, because some of them, some of the rooms, when you saw twenty, you're like, wow, that's still a little close. But, you know, it's not the final product, kid teachers aren't even in the schools yet. But I don't know, I would encourage you guys to go out and take a look, I think. That helped me a lot with this, I guess my only concern would be with this ten thousand. That is, that's an average based off of ten thousand, is that...
It's the number of cases out of ten thousand, I don't know the specific number, I will have to get with Chad to find that out, which I can. I just didn't participate on that call, and...
Okay, but there is a number that if we reach...
I'm assuming a percentage, and there's gotta be some sort of, he has to have a data point.
Right.
What that data point is, I don't have that answer, but I can find out.
Based on us.
And then, the present state system re, um, I'm sort of looking for, they reassess every Thursday. Would we be reassessing once a week or daily or...
So, what I, what I put out in post-recent communication, I said is that, you know, the information comes on Thursday, so the school district will take a look and decide and make movement on that following Monday to communicate. But the caveat I put in there, which I'm hoping our families read, was that if, you know, if we're orange, if it's red to orange, and if if we stay with the color, and we're gonna get kids in school as soon as we can, so if they announce that Thursday, we're gonna get kids in school on Monday, because it's easier to shift from at-home learning to coming in person. It's a little bit more challenging on the families to shift from in-person to get your babysitters ready, is everybody ready to go, especially for the younger population. So, in there, I said that the switch from in-person to remote may take, you know, case over two days, or it may take another week, depending on the severity, of which I said I would work with the health department, because it could be, if we stay with the colors, it could be, this is not good in our district, and we do need to get kids home, or it could be, this is not even really impacting Southwest Licking, it's impacting Hebron. And so, of course, your kids should come to school. So, I I put that a little bit in there, because I do, I don't want to burden our families. And I I don't think we're gonna, I think there's gonna be some more consistency in talking to Chad. We're not gonna have like an every-other-week thing, but I mean, it's also a part numbers thing, so it may take a little longer to switch back, if we have to go back to remote learning, based on the severity of what he says. Either way, if that, if we stay on the colors, that will be, that will be how we'll determine.
Personally, I kind of feel like we should look at our individual data. My concern and hesitation is, what is considered a safe number? Who's deciding this number's safe, this number's not safe? Because my concern would be, they're saying it's a safe number, but maybe it's not. That's my hesitation.
So, it's, it's right now, it's... And we only have the health department to go with, I mean, that's, or the governor, or the higher-up department. I mean, really, I mean, that's the problem, is we just have one somebody in some higher level to to go with at this point, right? I mean, some combination of those people.
Yeah, we only have the data.
Because right now, Licking County has not met any of their indicators to make it go red, and the only thing that's made it go red right now is we're one hundred, more than one hundred out of a thousand, a hundred thousand cases. And that appears to be, that is a indicate, that's a little star down at the bottom, that says, if you're more than a hundred out of a hundred thousand cases, that indicator supersedes all your other indicators.
And that's what, one oh six, it's not?
Yes, correct.
One oh five, yeah.
Yeah. So, they forgot to mention that, because if you start looking at all the data, and you're like, well, I don't, we don't meet this indicator, we don't meet this indicator, we don't meet, oh, they forgot to mention, but that indicator can throw you into red no matter what.
And I will say, I also felt better when the governor required all students to have it. I was, as you know from the last meeting, I was concerned with, but, I don't know. I think, given the governor making everyone wear masks, the rest of the county's doing this, I guess I would say, look at our individual data as well, but just make sure that number is safe.
So, you know I'm gonna have a bunch of questions. I try really hard to stay quiet. Deb hasn't asked questions yet, though. Do you wanna go first?
No, I'll go first.
So, I wrote down some stuff, and so I wouldn't forget, but one of my things is we keep, everyone has said, look at our own data in Southwest Licking, our kids, our population. We have, I don't know if it's significant, but we do have part of our population coming from Fairfield County. So, one of my questions is, will that data be incorporated into the averages that are being used to assess go or no-go?
That's a good question. I would ask to have, I would have to ask Chad how that will work. I don't know how that will work, I have, I'll have to ask Chad.
You know, he can't work with Fairfield to get the numbers that he needs from them to run whatever logarithm he has, or maybe we can get them from Fairfield to give to Chad. Or maybe we can get them from Fairfield to give to Chad, I don't, you know.
It's probably only ones that cover.
There's not a lot of students, but yeah, you know, um, so that, that was my one question.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
My other one would be, uh, small concern with utilizing absentee data to base these decisions on, because. We've got a significant, well, I guess seventy-some percent of our population, either because they want to or have to. Are sending their kids in person. If they know what we're, the decisions are being made based on this data, is it going to? And, you know, kind of push parents to be like, no, I don't want them to close school, so you go. Anyway, that would be a concern for me.
Well, I would say there are, there are going to be.
Here's some Tylenol, go to school.
Yeah, there are gonna be a lot of, of factors and things in place this year, um, working with the staff and the clinics. And the isolation rooms for those situations, and so I. I believe it will be hard, I'm not saying it's impossible.
Right.
Harder for parents to do that with kids, and I, I would hope that it wouldn't be that great amount of kids. To actually skew data and make it so, you know, because in, in theory, if you. Regardless, I don't, I don't think, I would hope that wouldn't be a thing, based on everything we have in place. I'd hope there would be enough to skew that. I mean. How would we know? I don't know.
I don't either, or just. Was just a, I'm, I, I like to play devil's advocate sometimes to bring up the, yeah, this sounds amazing, but like. Maybe consider these points. I'm still definitely on board. Um, I think this is a better way, potentially, um, but I'm not done. And then maybe you don't have the answer to this, but based on these two metrics, do you know, like, what has to be met? What are the thresholds? Can one be met and not the other one? Does that mean shutdown? If, if they're, or did they both have to be not met? It kinda like what the state works.
I, based on my conversations today with the, the superintendents that participated, they are working diligently behind the scenes to figure all that out. I don't think they have all those answers. I didn't get those answers from them, once I called and said, hey, tell me what you're doing. You know, once my mind started grabbing, you know, thoughts about moving in that direction, so I don't think they're quite there yet. Um, but I don't have an issue, if, if we had it in that direction anyways, I would need to call Chad and let him know, we're gonna be in. We're gonna be like the other schools and how we're doing this, so I'm gonna need to have that weekly communication, so. I don't understand, and, and before we make that decision, you know, what does that look like? What does that involve? You know, maybe we may too make that decision when we have all the pieces of puzzle.
So I will say that, that, that leads me to what potentially will be my last question. But, um, so I think it's important for our computer, at least it feels important for them to understand. How we're making these no-go, no-go considerations.
Absolutely.
So knowing that, um, those metrics and how they work will be key, and my next question is, um. How are we going to present this to our community who are also seemingly very frustrated by what they perceive to be. A constantly changing environment, and kind of how we kind of soften that blow if we. Switch our.
Sure. So I guess I'm cautiously optimi- I'm. Well, talk about staff in a second. I'm cautiously optimistic that the community would actually really like this plan. Because I do believe that those that have chosen in-person learning want their kids in school, for whatever reason that may be. They all have different reasons. Um, I've already, you know, I've been reading all of the social media threads, and we've been getting tons and tons of emails. Um, which I appreciate, and much other than email their questions and put them on social media. Um, however, I, I do believe that the families that are choosing in-person, and that's been their choice. Will be happy to know there's a better chance their kids will be in school, uh, because I think the fear right now is they're going to be at home. Because we've been red the last couple of weeks. Now, are, are there people that could be upset? Absolutely. Um, you know, I think in explaining, it's in alignment with the county, here's the metrics, here's what we're looking for, here's why. Um, and again, as we've told a ton of people via multiple ways of communication, at any time, you can go remote. You just can't come back to it and rarely choose the remote option. So we, I do believe there are families waiting to come to school and try it out. And see how it looks and how it goes, and then they may at that point choose to pull their kids. So I, I would be surprised if we had a lot of people upset if we changed that piece. I just think it would make it better for our families to get their kids in school, or more of a, almost a guarantee, there's a really good chance we can get kids to school. Um, I, I could be wrong. Now, on the other side, I can't speak to the staff, um. I, I mean, I, I know everyone's, the privilege to all the materials and the readings and, um, you know, I think that we have a lot of staff that are very. Passionate about returning to school, and I've heard from a lot of them that are excited and can't wait, and I think there are others, it's not that they don't wanna come back, I think they're just very nervous and anxious. And would be more comfortably teaching remotely. So I'm not sure, overall, I don't know where that would fall. With their. Love or support for a different plan, if we're being honest, just presenting everything.
Okay, thank you.
And I put your other things in my notepad, so.
Dan?
I think my biggest concern, I, I agree, I, we should be looking at what's happening with our kids. Um, my biggest concern is. How valid the data's gonna be and will we receive that in a timely fashion?
I mean, he says, he, I, again, I didn't personally participate, but what was told to me was you'll get that weekly. It will be no different than the weekly data or the weekly conversations we're having about the risk level changing, he would be providing that weekly. Um, you know, obviously, it's not possible to crunch those numbers daily, which I understand, like, it'd be a huge undertaking for any one person. Or team of people, but it would be a weekly decision. You know, and I, I can't promise how that works, how it looks. Um, and you know, maybe we wait a little bit and see how it goes, maybe we go ahead and see what happens on Thursday. Um, maybe we revisit this on the twentieth, I'm not suggesting we make a decision on, for that twenty-fourth, that would really upset parents. Um, but maybe we see how it goes to some of the other schools, I don't know. I just thought we should at least talk about it.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good discussion. I'm, like I said, I'm definitely for. Looking at our kids. It would almost be nice if we could say, we're, we're gonna wait and watch, and then we can have the comparison. While we were red, but really, our kids would have gone to school three, you know, three weeks. When we stayed on red. So, to have that information, that, that data in front of us, just to say. We, we, yeah, we're relying on the state, we have local information that's better, our kids would be in school.
Yeah, and that's, and if, if we think it would be not such a, you know, a shock factor, just kind of we've been holding. We could, um, I could ask to be able to have that data weekly, it's something we could share with the community. Um, and then maybe as a collective group in the board, then we make a, maybe an additional recommendation. In September, if we're still red, or I don't know if we wanna wait that long, I don't, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not sure what the date is that we wanna do that, but we could definitely. I, I don't see, there's no reason that, that information shouldn't be public knowledge nor shared. And maybe if we start educating people so they have a better understanding, and letting them know, you know, we're really heavily looking at this. We're thinking about, you know, we'd say it differently now, but, you know, switching over or changing. And, you know, each week kinda do a little update on the data to kind of show them where they're at, maybe that would be a better way to approach things, just so it's not so like. Well, today we were this way, now they're, cause I, I know they feel that, even though I think, I can do plans, it hasn't changed, but. It hasn't changed, but.
What do you mean, they're announcing final plans? Like, that was the. I always enjoy the, well, what, have you decided what we're doing yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, July seventeenth or something.
Yeah, we did like a month ago, but, um, that's an option too, if, if everybody thinks that that might be a better way to approach it. Um, that would give me time as well to talk to, to share with the union things we're looking at. For a little bit of preparation for all parties involved. So that's a thought. And then we could look at that data and discuss it. Go from there.
I think I would like to, personally, I would like to see it, if we're still on red on Thursday. I would like, which would then put us in remote learning. I, I would like to see us then follow that data for. In the next couple of weeks. I would not, I would personally not like us to follow. If that data is different in our community for, like. Too long, I would not want to put it out there that we should have been in school. While, um, while we're not for very long without us being in school. Particularly for the parents that wanted to send their kids, because. The parents that want to send their kids, a lot of those parents are very much wanting to send their kids, so. Um. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm getting all that out. You know what I'm saying? I wouldn't wanna, I would, I would like to get them into school then. You, does that make sense? I would, I wouldn't want to. Yeah, I would like to make a decision on that fairly quickly if we're gonna go that way, I guess is what I'm saying.
Problem with the comparing the data.
Yeah.
Uh, that, their, we're, the current state code system. Color system to this data is, we will only have one of these two metrics.
That's what I was gonna say, we won't have the absentee.
We won't have that absentee metric until.
Like two week, two weeks in, I know, that's the problem.
We'd have to, he would base his recommendation on.
Just the one.
Cases and households.
Right, yeah.
In the, in the school district, which I mean is a starting point.
Right.
The strength.
But it's not, it's not gonna be the second factor that, or the variable that we would have if we were in person, which is just something we can't control.
No. I guess I would, I guess what I'm saying, I wouldn't necessarily wanna wait like four, five, or six weeks. With that, with that continuing data of, oh, we would have been in school this week, we would have been in school this week, we would have been in school this week, we would have been.
Frustrate parents.
Yeah, especially if we're going to present like the potential new way of.
Yes.
Well, I, don't you think we should get that out there right now, though? I mean, I think we start.
That's what I'm saying, but I wouldn't.
I know, that's the thing.
Something that we're gonna be looking.
Right, I know.
But that's what I'm saying. We don't wanna wait for weeks.
Too long, if.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I think that.
Cause then you'll see all the like, well, according to their new way of looking. I don't know why I'm the voice with everything, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
If we wanted to, I mean, school isn't starting for two weeks, so if we wanted to see what happens Thursday, and then. Or it means the following Thursday, right? So then the following Thursday, I could come back, I could have time to work with Chad, other county superintendents. And bring back maybe a little bit more of a concrete plan with actual numbers, and then maybe based on that Thursday, which is still before actually the first day of school. Then we could communicate to everybody, here's what the board has discussed, here's where we're at, based on, you know, can we be looking at. You know, a couple of weeks or something, we could figure that out from there.
Yeah, Casey, can he pull data up now, like based on our district?
Yeah.
At least with that one metric?
You can pull zip codes.
I would, yeah, I know that some of the codes are shared between like the districts.
Like Granville, yeah.
Um, I'm guessing I could ask Chad.
I'm guessing he can do that.
I would think so.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think I personally can do it.
No, I would guess he can do that.
Ask Chad to do it, yes.
That's what I'm wondering, if he could, if he could pull that data, like.
Like historical, it'd be nice to, to have the historical basis, so that maybe we could make the decision based on the one metric sooner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, could he start looking like this week and the next week? I mean, we know four three oh six two has been a fairly high zip code, because we keep seeing the blue. The darker blue square in comparison to the colors around us, right? I mean, if you've looked at the Licking County Health Department.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask them how many we can get, so the more information we have, the better, to help make those decisions.
So where we're at now, we are going to reassess next Thursday at our meeting.
I guess, I think, I think what we need to do is, I guess my recommendation would be to stay the course currently. Um, given that we told the community this, and, you know, our staff, this Thursday would make a decision. So Thursday will be, a decision will be made, whether it's a remote start or an in-person, depending on the color, color level. Um, I will work on getting data and information from Chad, I will bring that back to the board, the following Thursday, the board being the twentieth, probably the start of school. At that time, we could decide if we want to make a different recommendation, you know, maybe if it's watching it for two weeks or three, or whatever we decide. Uh, or to change it right there on spot based on whatever data I can get, depending on what that looks like.
Yeah.
Um, and then share that with our families, is what I'm thinking.
I'd like that. I have.
So, uh, uh. So if we move to the new, and we have to go to remote, does that mean sports are done?
I mean, if he, if, if districts are getting put out remote by the health department, there should be no sports. Because at that point, the severity level is, is high, yes. And that's pretty much what everybody has said. That's in that vote.
Okay.
That's, that's the problem. If you're getting, if you're in remote school, there shouldn't be any sports. So the problem for us right now is. We're gonna be in remote school and, but we're gonna be doing sports, and that's so, that goes against all of my like, no, that's not right.
But does that mean we're not allowing remote students that choose remote to participate?
That's a different, that's different. That's your parents made a decision based on their things. We're not, it's.
I thought so, I was just clarifying out loud.
Yeah.
So does everybody feel comfortable with that plan or that idea or? Okay, so stay tuned, I'll be back, and I'll probably, if given additional information this week, whatever I get, I'll include that in my course run sometime. And just, the more I can give you, so you're, you know, thinking about it, the more you have when we come back together.
And if he had, by any chance gets you any of that data in advance.
I will, I will share absolutely, yep, whatever I get.
And any words of wisdom, I would love to take those too. I'm sure.
Okay, that's it, that's all I had for, for a day.
Okay. Mister Jones, anything else from you?
No, ma'am.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
Second. Call the roll, please, Mister Jones.
Mister Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mister Zini?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, we are adjourned at six forty P M.